Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of International Falls for Tuesday, September the 5th, 2017. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I ask the City Administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda, and we have one addition to the agenda, and that's to consider a proclamation for POW MIA Recognition Day. That, the council's pleasure, with the agenda and the addition.
Move on the agenda with the addition.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the agenda with the addition.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I thought we had discussed at Budget and Finance that we would bring a resolution to the County Board in passage.
I don't know if we got any additional information at this point.
We're gonna have to wait on that.
So, is there a second to the motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
One second.
Second by Counselor Drowe. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Question.
Aye.
Aye.
And although yes, motion is carried. Agenda is approved with the addition. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the regular City Council Meeting of August the 21st. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. None question?
Aye.
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 And although yes, on that motion, and the motion is carried. Minutes are approved for August the 21st. Thank you. We move to the minutes of the special meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, August the 29th. Your pleasure with those minutes.
I'll move on the special City Council meeting.
Motion by Counselor Drowe to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Again, discussion on the motion or the minutes. Hearing none question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried. Minutes are approved for the special meeting of August the 29th. Thank you. Move to the payment of claims and transfers. We have a transfer from the Lodging Tax Fund to the General Fund of $728.17. We have accounts payable claims, the City of International Falls regular claims, $375,426.15. We have regular Airport Commission claims of $34,665.20. And we have Airport Commission Terminal Project claims of $776,535.54. Your pleasure with the transfers and the accounts payable claims. Motion by Counselor Briggs to adopt the resolution approving the transfers and the payment of the claims.
Two seconds.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the resolution.
I just have a question.
Please.
Which I should've asked earlier, I apologize. St. Louis County Auditor Shield charges, what's that? $9,975. I don't like to catch people flatfoot.
Chief of Police, can you give an answer to that?
That's what we pay for our records management system.
Oh, Shield charges.
Management.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions with regard to the claims or transfers or the resolution? Hearing none question?
Aye.
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 And although yes, motion is approved, and the payment of claims and transfers are approved. Thank you. Go to the audience, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to bring something to the attention of the council at this time that's not on the agenda? If not, there'd be an opportunity at the close of the meeting for audience participation again. With that, we would move to the consent agenda. Item 1 under consent agenda is to approve registration, travel, and training expenses for the City Council and staff to attend the 2017 Regional League of Minnesota Cities Meeting in Virginia. Motion by Counselor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Counselor Drowe to approve the consent agenda. We're gonna take both items at one time, excuse me. Second item is to approve the Budget and Finance Committee recommendation to accept the Schlenner-Wenner proposal to provide audit services to the City, the International Falls Fire Relief Association, and the Airport Commission for the audit years 2017, 18, and 19. Accept your motion, Counselor Jacksaw, to approve the consent agenda?
Geez. I have a question on the second one that really, it doesn't really go to the approval of the payment though, but I'd like to ask a question.
Point of order afterwards, I would accept.
Okay.
I would move to accept the consent agenda. Second.
You're gonna make the second to the, thank you. So we have the motion to approve the consent agenda by Counselor Jacksaw, second by Counselor Drowe. Question?
Aye.
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 And although yes, motion is carried, and consent agenda is approved. Point of order by Counselor Jacksaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had an opportunity to review the airport audit this afternoon when I got it, and I did have some concern about Schlenner-Wenner's presentation of the operating grant we provide to the airport. It's listed under capital, and that shouldn't be there. Isn't that $280,000 a year we give? That isn't for capital improvements, that's for operations.
You're talking about the full budget amount that the city contributes to the airport?
It doesn't go to capital outlays, it goes to operations.
A portion of it goes to capital outlay because we have to, we receive, we're eligible for a million dollars from the Airport Improvement Program under the FAA, and we would then have to match that with $100,000, excuse me, $50,000 now because we're eligible for 95% funding.
But they have the whole $280,000 under capital improvement grants, and thus showing an inflated operating loss. It's not correct.
I guess to the City Administrator and administrative staff, might be well to note that question, I did not catch that when I read the audit.
I'll review the audit, we received it today via email, I have not read through it, and I'll review it, and then if we have questions, we can correspond with Schlenner-Wenner directly to get that clarified. Be happy to do that.
Thank you. Move to new business. Item number 1 under new business is to request the street closure for the one-mile glow run for the FHS PBIS, Alex Manasa. If you'd care to come forth, and if Lisa, you want to come up too, you're certainly welcome to sit down if you may.
All right, well, I'm Alex Manasa, and this is Lisa West, and we're both teachers at Falls High School and members of the PBIS Committee. PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. It's our positive behavior initiative at FHS, and it's also a program that's run at FES. So hopefully you had a chance to read the memo that I sent to Betty. It has positively influenced our school in many ways, listed in the first paragraph there. Most importantly, thanks to the generous businesses in our community, we've been able to sustain this program. However, to not strain our businesses, we also do some fundraising, and so because of that, our first fundraiser this year is our Second Annual Bronco Glow Run. It's set to take place to kick off our homecoming week on Monday, October 2nd, starting at 7:30 PM until about 8:00 or 8:15 probably. The race would start at Falls High School, 1515 11th Street, and it ends at about 10:07 11th Street. That's where the turnaround is to head back to Falls High School. So the most important part, of course, is we're asking for some assistance in ensuring the safety of all the participants in this run. So what we did last year is we had 11th Street closed off at the highway until 10th Avenue, and the city brought some barricades for us to put out, and then there was just some police cars just around to keep everybody safe. In addition to this, we had some problems last year with people wanting to park still in front of the school at certain times, and so we would like some temporary no parking signs in front of high school at about 6:30 PM, which would be an hour before the start, and then they'd be taken down after 8:15 or 8:30. That's what we're asking for from the city, and let me know if you have any questions.
Questions for Alex or Lisa? For Chief Mastin, if the council authorized no parking in front of the high school and the closure of 11th Street from the highway to 10th Avenue, I would believe, or 9th Avenue?
To 10th Avenue.
To 10th Avenue?
To 10th.
Okay. Do you see any issues with that?
No issues, Mr. Mayor. They must move.
Need additional personnel or persons to control traffic on the cross streets or anything?
I'll certainly have some officers there, so I don't know if you guys need more officers than you had last year.
No, I think last year should. It was just to make sure, you know, people knew where they could go around to get to pick.
All right, would the council consider then authorizing no parking in front of the high school for the evening of October the 2nd, and then closure of 11th Street from Highway 71 to 10th Avenue? Motion by Counselor Briggs, second by Counselor Drowe. Discussion on the motion or the no parking or closure.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just a question regarding jurisdiction, I believe it's a county state highway, is there any need for county approval to close the street during those time periods?
I wouldn't think so. It's a city street, I understand it is maintained by the county in terms of its structure, but I don't know that we would have to have county approval. A county highway, I would say, you know, that wasn't in the city, I would say that they would have jurisdiction, but I, I mean, I guess we can certainly ask that, but I don't think that we've ever had any problem with that, to my knowledge, but I think it's a good point. Further discussions or questions with regard to authorizing the no parking or the closure of streets and approving the half-mile run? If not, question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried, and approval is given.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your good work. Item number 2 under new business is to approve the transfer of $185,000 from the Fund Number 418 to Fund 809 for the payment to the Kuching Economic Development Authority for the city share of the cold box construction. Paul Nevenon. Good afternoon.
Having me? As outlined in Ken's resolution, it basically restates, we went before both city and county when we learned that Jaguar Land Rover requested a additional cold box, and we used the same partnership and approach as we did on the original one for them. We applied for a deed grant, we received that grant, a notification of award in May, and we hope to have an executed agreement with Jaguar late June or early July, but due to a series of delays, we did finally get an executed five-year extension lease with Jaguar that really moved the project forward. It was a requirement of both bodies and deed to have an executed agreement. Steve Schmoller, KITA's attorney as well, reviewed the document pretty straightforward as it was last time, so now we find ourselves looking to our partners for the funding, and again, it's a three-way partnership with the city and county and state. Five-year loan, 2% interest, and actually, construction has begun today, so we're moving along. It always gets a little tight at this timeframe, but I just feel we've got a good team out there, and so look forward to moving this project forward.
Good. So, council's consideration of the resolution approving the transfer of $185,000 to the Fund 809 for the payment of the city share of the cold box construction to be paid back over a five-year period at 2% rate of increase of interest, excuse me?
I would move on that resolution.
Motion by Counselor Drowe to approve the resolution?
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I voted against this, and I'll vote against it again, not because I don't approve the project, but because I disapprove of the fact that KITA itself isn't contributing when they have more reserves than we do for economic development in their cold box accounts and on their balance sheet, the last time I looked at it anyway. So that's why I'm voting no. Whether you agree with it or not, I'm voting no. I just want people to understand that it's not because I'm against another cold box, it's just that I thought KITA should put some skin in the game on this one too, not just county and city. Anyway.
City Attorney.
Again, and not to directly address Ms. Jacksaw's concerns, but this is a big deal for the county and the city. The last one that we did five years ago for the other building, everybody contributes, but basically Jaguar with their rent pays for the building, and now going forward, it's an income stream that we have some maintenance expenses, but it's a very profitable thing. And the same thing with this, you know, in terms of skinning the game, everybody's getting paid back through the rents, and then it'll be, we'll have two buildings that have been paid for by Jaguar moving forward, so I mean, it really, in terms of economic, we couldn't ask for anything this good. I mean, it really is fabulous, and Paul's done a great job to negotiate these and develop this relationship with Jaguar, and, you know, we should count our blessings, and I think it's really almost an accounting function as to where the money is coming from, you know, but I think in terms of our grant with the state, it's presented in the fashion that we have the county contributing and the city contributing, and everybody's paying a third, and that's the way it was done before, and so, I mean, I think, you know, to protect integrity of that grant, and since it was done before and approved before, you know, I think to change it maybe would have jeopardized our receiving the grant. So I understand your concerns, but basically, you know, it's a pass-through, the money's coming in every year to pay for it, and it really is gonna lessen, you know, at some point down the road, when all these are paid for, you know, KITA's gonna have more funds at their disposal to do things for the community so that they won't be here asking the City Council to contribute funds for those, unless hopefully, we could build another cold box, that'd be great. But I would really encourage the city to approve this. One, you know, the cat's out of the bag, we already started construction, so we could have a real problem on our hands if the council didn't approve this.
Counselor Drowe.
I just wanted to echo what Steve had just said. I mean, the reality is, is after all of this is said and done, we're gonna have a building, we're gonna have the interest in its economic development, and I think Paul could help us out with how much money that the cold box brings into our community in hotel sales, food sales, restaurants, and just all great things for our community. So, one thing that I always looked at on this specific thing is, if the city puts in the money, what do we get out of it? Well, we get interest and a building. I mean, there's no downside for the city.
We don't get the building, belongs to KITA.
And who's?
Who's KITA?
The city and the county.
You know, so that's been my thought all along, I mean, there's no downside, and now that we've locked a long-term lease for five years into it, it's a done deal. I mean, it just only makes sense to me.
Paul?
Those operating funds, it's a little skewed because that's what carries the operation at KITA, the three positions there. We can do get some funding from the ITRP, but we're not, the city and county do not contribute directly to our operation. It's funded by the cold weather activity, so the onus is on us to make sure that we have a solid cash flow from these activities.
And you do, right?
But, right, it's gotta carry us all the year.
So while it might look like we have a lot of cash on hand, those monies are used over the entire year, they fund all of the Kuching Economic Development Authority activities. And can I ask one question, Paul, and that would be with regard to Jaguar Land Rover, and do they hire any additional persons during the year when they're here, in addition to their technicians?
They have hired two locals as part of, they are now part of the operation year round, and they are increasing the number of part-time seasonal drivers. They're gonna be well in advance of 16 drivers for this year too. That'll be seasonal part-time work, but they continue to grow and hire local folks, so that is another benefit to having them here in our community.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion items with regard to the resolution approving the transfer of $185,000 to KITA for the construction of the cold box?
Mayor?
Please.
Just for the council's information, Paul and I had a conversation with the county administrator on Friday. She's presented this information to the county attorney, and we suggested that perhaps it would be appropriate to have a loan agreement between the city, the county, and KITA for this, just to lay out the terms, and so we haven't heard back from the county attorney as yet. This JLR lease just came in late on Thursday, so if he deems it appropriate to have a loan agreement, I think this resolution authorizes yourself and myself to sign on behalf of the city, provided all the terms are in accordance with this resolution and has been identified by Paul, so I just wanted to make sure the council understood that, and I'll keep you advised when I hear more from the county.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, call the question on the resolution?
Aye.
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 And although yes, motion is carried with four for and one against, and the resolution is adopted, approving the transfer of funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number 3 under new business is the pre-authorization of signatures for the International Falls-Kuching County Airport Commission 2018 Federal Grant Agreement. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the pre-authorization of those signatures for that grant agreement. Second by Counselor Drowe. Discussion on the motion or the grant agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I just need clarification from the two representatives on the Airport Commission. I see where the grant is 3.7 million, the total project is 6.2 million, the difference is 2.5 million. Is that the state contribution then?
This would be the state bonding funds.
Okay, that's the.
$3 million have been approved by the state of Minnesota.
Okay. So this is essentially Phase 2 of the project, or Phase 3?
Yes, this is Phase 2 of the terminal project.
Of the terminal project. Is there a Phase 3?
No.
Oh, God.
If there are any funds left from the construction of Phase 2, they will go into the area along the front, whatever you want to call the front or the back of the terminal building where the airplanes are parked. The airport manager has asked for a larger apron to have greater turnaround space for the planes there than what the FAA authorizes, and so the state bonding monies, in the state bonding request, we asked if it was possible to spend those monies on that apron, and that has been approved by the legislature and the governor.
And from what I read here, there is no local match of any amount.
No. The project, the entire terminal project is about, gonna be somewhere in the area of 13 to 14 million. The city and county have contributed 1 million to that. The rest of the monies are coming from the federal FAA and from the state.
So that's already been considered? It's not state, okay.
Further questions or discussions with regard to the grant or the motion? Hearing none question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried, and the pre-authorization of the signatures for the federal grant are approved. Thank you. Item number 4 under new business is to approve the mayoral proclamation proclaiming Friday, September 15, 2017, as POW MIA Recognition Day, as requested by the auxiliary to the Veterans of Foreign Wars, Peter Graham Post 2948. Irene Anderson is here, if there's any questions with regard to that proclamation.
I would move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the proclamation.
Aye.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the proclamation. Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried, proclamation is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Irene. Item number 5 under new business is to approve the order declaring buildings and property unsafe, hazardous, in violation of local and state building standards. Those two properties are, one at 1621 First Avenue West, owned by Ms. Maxine Mackeldowney, and the second is at 1727 Seventh Avenue West, and the property owner is Ruth Lynn Schoestet. City Attorney, do you wish to speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, I think Ken passed out an order, proposed order on the Mackeldowney property. I would urge the council to sign this, and then we'll have it served on her, and that will begin the process. She's not responded to numerous contacts and letters from Kelly to make these repairs, so if she does not, then we'll take this order to district court and get an order from the judge authorizing it to be torn down as a blighted property. There is not such an order on the Schoestet property. The reason for that is the issues are under a different ordinance, and the ordinance, the issue on the Schoestet property is there are two, one is a mobile home, and one is a motor home that would be towed by a pickup truck or something like that, and they are, have been deemed blighted by Kelly and Adam, and letters have been sent, but the ordinance, the remedy with regard to manufactured home and trailer homes is a little different than the remedy under ordinance 10, 21 or 51, 51 I think. The one calls for an order with manufactured homes and. the other, with manufactured homes and trailer homes, it does not call for an order specifically. Uh, but it is, the violation is a misdemeanor. Uh, Kelly's been in contact, uh, with Ms. Skogstad. I think she's due to be here tomorrow. Uh, so we're hoping, uh, that, uh, she will, uh, agree to have those removed and signed whatever paperwork, uh, Kelly prepares for her. If not, uh, and she's still not in compliance, uh, our next step would be that we could charge her with a misdemeanor, a criminal offense, punishable up to ninety days in jail and a thousand dollar fine. Uh, and if convicted of that, part of the sentence would undoubtedly be removal of those, uh, items. Uh, and so it's a little different process that, that we go through. Uh, but hopefully, uh, that, uh, will, uh, be accomplished through that meeting tomorrow.
So, uh, do you want us to, to take these one at a time?
Yes, I think the order, uh, can, uh, can be handled. And with regard to the Skogstad, I don't know that any council action is necessary. I think just Kelly and I will follow through, uh, on, uh, our activities, and, and they do not, you know, I don't need a resolution from the council to bring a, uh, criminal complaint, uh, against, uh, an individual for violating an ordinance. That's a decision I would typically make on my own with staff, uh, and wouldn't require a, a set ordinance. Uh, I mean, if the council wants to, uh, take some action in that regard, you could, but I don't think it's required. I think if Kelly and I just have the discretion to handle it in the way we feel best, uh, I don't think it requires, uh, approval of the council like this order does. But, but, uh, I, so yes, you, I would request that you handle them separately.
All right. So the, the question for the council is, uh, do you wish to consider the, uh, hazardous house at sixteen twenty-one First Avenue West? That the owner is Ms. Maxine Mackeldowney?
I would move on that order and the signing of that order.
Motion by Councilor Dova to, uh, approve the order.
Second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Discussion on the, uh, motion or the, uh, order? Do you have any further items with regard to that?
I think we're fine.
Okay. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Annove, yes. Motion is carried, and the order is approved. Thank you. Now, with regard to the, uh, Skogstad property, so you have, if I understood your, your statement, City Attorney, you have the, the power under the ordinance to take and, and move forward. I, I would just say, from having been contacted by property owners on both sides of that property, um, that, that it has been an aggravated situation all summer. Somebody squatting on that property, uh, noise late into the night, um, and the place is, is nothing but a mess and needs to be cleaned up. The Chief Maston's officers have been over there, I don't know how many, uh, times. I think that's, uh, it's gone beyond reasonableness for any citizens or neighbors to have to put up with. And so, I would certainly encourage, if she doesn't sign the order tomorrow, I would ask, um, as mayor, that you would... Go after her with everything you have.
And I, uh, will pledge to do that, uh, Mr. Mayor. And if we don't have it, uh, resolved by Friday, uh, and Friday, because I'm without my assistant tomorrow with Thursday. Uh, but if we don't have it resolved by Friday, uh, on Friday, we'll prepare a criminal misdemeanor complaint and have it served on her, and, uh, she can explain the situation to Judge Le Duke.
Very good. Thank you. Further, is, is it, the, the other council members have, have?
Agree with you totally.
Yeah. Who agrees?
Thank you. Kelly, did you have any further with regard to that?
No, I think at this time, I think we're fine, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Oh, we appreciate what you, what you've done. You, you've been there many times, too, and you've done great work, and I compliment you for that. But thank you. Item number six under new business then is to approve the appointment of Nicole Mase to, uh, the vacant full-time paramedic position, effective immediately. Chief Manasa.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just as the memo states, I'm requesting to fill the vacant position created by the resignation of Lisa Mortensen. And, uh, after some, after the interview process and some, uh, evaluations, I'd like to recommend Nicole Mase at this time for that position. Uh, as stated, Nicole has worked as a casual paramedic for the service since January of sixteen, and prior to that, since, I believe it was August of fifteen, uh, as an EMT for our service. So her working knowledge of the service and, uh, prior experience, I think she'll be a good fit for us.
Very good. Thank you. To council's pleasure, then, with the appointment of Nicole Mase to, uh, to the full-time paramedic position for the city.
I'll move that.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve that.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the appointment? None questions?
Aye.
Aye.
Annove, yes. Motion is carried, and appointment is approved. Thank you, Chief. Item number seven under new business is to approve the mayor's appointment to the Inflow and Infiltration Committee to, uh, work with the North Koochding Area Sanitary District. Take these one at a time, unless you wanna take all three together. It's, uh...
I'd like to take them one at a time.
Okay, all right. So then we have the, the first one is, uh, the Inflow and Infiltration Committee, and that would include, uh, the city administrator, um, the city public works director, the, uh, street and water commissioner, Councilor Pearson, uh, the city attorney, Steve Schremon, and as needed, uh, we would have Kurt Myers, our, uh, consulting engineer from Wedsley Smith and Olting, who has conducted the, um, inflow and infiltration, uh, measurement. Uh, they would, they would also be, uh, a member of this committee as needed.
That was my question.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the consulting engineers would also...
Be a part of this.
Be a part of this as needed.
As a member of the public works, uh, committee, I mean, this has came up a couple of times, not necessarily specifically because of, uh, the North Kooch, but, um, the reality is, is this is pretty much exactly what I would've saw if we had to have a committee to do. I would move on this, on all members of the committee.
Okay, motion by Councilor Dova to approve the, uh, Inflow and Infiltration Committee, uh, for the City of International Falls, in its meetings with the North Kooch Area Sanitary Sewer District.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs.
Okay. I think there's too many here. I mean, you're gonna have negotiations, right? Isn't, isn't it going, how many other members are, how many are coming off the North Kooch Sewer District? Is Don Billy gonna be there?
No. This would be between the city, and it would be between the, as I understand, the city administrator, and maybe the question more properly is answered by you, that this would be between the executive director, the attorney for the sewer district, and the consulting engineers to the sewer district. There would be probably at least three members from the sewer district that would be there.
So you're talking about nine people, possibly ten, if you include Kurt, negotiating with, uh, maybe I don't understand, I, I, meeting with the state on this, right?
Mayor, please. If I could add some information, uh, we did receive an email, uh, correspondence from the executive director of the North Koochding Sanitary District, and they're working through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, or with them, to try and come up with a schedule of compliance on some issues that they have in operating the plant. In order for them to fulfill that in the area of inflow and infiltration, they need to, they being North Kooch, needs to negotiate and have discussions with each of the client agencies, which includes the City of International Falls, the City of Rainier, and the East Koochding Sanitary District. Uh, each need to have representatives to negotiate on behalf of the respective entities, uh, about what we're gonna do to try and reduce inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer system.
So this does not involve the MPCA at this point?
Well, the MPCA is negotiating directly with North Kooch, but we've been specifically precluded from having any direct conversations with the MPCA. They all have to be through the North Koochding Sanitary District, because that's the, the entity that owns the plant, manages the plant, and operates the plant. And so, um, but they're being, they're getting direction from the MPCA about potential, um, sanctions against each of the entities if the inflow and infiltration isn't resolved. So that's why we're having negotiations and discussions about setting up a timeframe and, and identifying what needs to be done to try and minimize the inflow and infiltration of the system. And so, each entity is appointing subcommittees, and they've, I guess your point is a question of, is there too many?
I will be, yeah.
They've asked for two or three from each committee, but, um, we can appoint who we choose to, and, and, um, the mayor's feeling appropriate that, um, this number of people be involved, because we all have a different, um, skill set, I think, and perspective that we bring to the discussion.
Yes, Councilor Dova?
That, that's exactly what I was gonna hit on. I mean, uh, Gary and Ted, those two have, are incredibly knowledgeable on, uh, faster than our computer database on where our sewers are, what, what is ours. And there's been some discussion on what, what, uh, sewers are ours, and we should be maintaining, and which ones North Kooch should be. So, obviously, tho, those two are, are very good. We have two of our, uh, representation of the Kita board on there. Mayor Anderson also represents Public Works and, uh, Steve Schremon for legal issues. I think this is probably the least we could have to have good representation for this if it goes to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency.
Mr. Mayor? He's City Attorney.
Well, and I would do, this is a, uh, committee of the city. Uh, I think, and I would envision that these committee members would, uh, meet together without North Kooch, uh, and determine what our position is. In terms of actual negotiations, it may be that, you know, only two or three people from this group would actually be present, uh, you know, to, to negotiate with North Kooch, but they would be carrying, you know, kinda like we, you know, it'd be like if we had a committee as a whole here on something, and you come up with a recommendation, uh, doesn't mean that everybody in the committee as a whole is gonna be involved in the negotiation to, to carry out the recommendation.
Okay, I can picture that.
So, I, I think this will, uh, let us come up with our best possible, uh, input as to what we wanna do, and then, uh, the committee itself could designate several people to do the actual negotiating with North Kooch.
Further discussion with regard to the motion or the committee? There are none. Uh, Chair would then call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain, since I'm one of them.
Oh, aye.
Okay, and I would abstain, being a member of the committee. So there would be three, four, the motion, and, uh, two abstentions. Motion is carried, and committee is approved. Thank you. Then move to the Labor Contracts and Negotiating Committee. That would include the, uh, city administrator, the city attorney, except in those discussions with the Police Officers Union, Brad Ettested, Councilor Briggs, Councilor Jacksaw, and Mayor Anderson.
Do we have an open meeting? Does we better pass open meetings?
Um, I think, uh, and I don't, City Administrator, can you respond to that? Do we, uh, when we have negotiations, do we generally put up a statement that, uh, or any committee, that, that there could be a membership of the council, full membership of the council present?
Mayor, council, what we do do is, we do post all committee agendas. Um, the open meeting law requires that they be posted seventy-two hours before the meeting date. And in a committee such as this, of assuming it would go forward where there's, um, a quorum of the city council present, we disclose that there will be a quorum of the council, uh, meeting, but there will be no official actions taken by the city council, 'cause they're serving in the capacity, in this case, of a labor contracts and negotiating committee. So we disclose that, um, to comply with the open meeting law, 'cause we do have a quorum of the council present. We commonly do that.
Okay, but what I'm asking is, I don't know, would the public be present, then, for negotiations if they chose to be?
Uh, they could be anyways, unless it's a closed meeting. They would be open to the public.
And I guess the, uh, maybe to add to your question, why three from the city council? Um, I, I know in the negotiations three years ago, there were times that some members of the committee couldn't make it, and we were down to, uh, one person from the city council being represented. Um, I'd like to always have a couple. There may be times that some of us can't be at negotiating committee meeting, and so, uh, just name three people. Um, I think it... Well, the council's pleasure with the, um, appointments of, uh, those individuals to the Labor Contracts and Negotiating Committee. Motion by Councilor Dova?
Second.
Second by Councilor Pearson.
Now, if we all three abstain, we're not gonna be able to pass this.
That's true. Although, uh...
I'll vote twice.
I'll vote, I, I'll vote. I'll vote, no, no. I'm just teasing.
Further discussion? Question on the, uh, the motion then, to approve the committee?
I'll be the one to abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Annove, yes. Motion is carried.
I'm working with you, Brian.
And then the last committee, uh, ad hoc committee to be designated is the one that we had during discussions, uh, with the Chamber of Commerce Executive Board, and that would be to, uh, uh, do discussions with regard to, um, the contract, uh, workings of the contract, and then just overall communications, uh, with the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce that we do have this contract with, and would appoint, uh, Councilor Dova and Mayor Anderson to, uh, on that committee.
And I would move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs to approve the appointments.
Second.
Second by Councilor Pearson. Discussion.
I'm looking forward to, you know, uh, greater cohesion between the two.
Kind of a sidebar, but don't you ever get tired of being on committees?
No.
Thank you. Further, uh, discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Annove, yes. Motion is carried. Committee is approved. Thank you. Move to item number ten under, uh, new business. Consider Human Resources Committee recommendation to appoint Solutions Insurance Agency Cindy Hybo as agent of record for the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Property Casualty Workers Compensation Insurance Program, effective immediately.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
As Chair of the Human Resource Committee, I would, and this came before our committee, I'll carry the motion on that.
Okay. Have motion by Councilor Jacksaw.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion by Councilor Briggs.
I would be glad to give the, you know, we, there really is no cost differential here. It's a matter of presentation and effort that I saw when we met. And I did hear, and you can second me on this, Brian, or, or hop in when you want to. Um, the, uh, we've had the contract with Reliable Insurance Agency for twenty years. I think it's good practice to change things up once in a while, but beyond that, just the effort and the presentation and the, uh, interest in getting this contract, I think, was really strongly demonstrated by Solutions Insurance. And it seemed that their packet had other services. They have a well-developed website that was cited by a number of city... They have a well-developed website that was cited by a number of city employees as being useful to them. So, that's why we recommended it then, the change.
There's no, there's.
No difference.
No difference in, in the cost to the City of International Falls for either.
Either agency because it is ultimately paid by the League of Minnesota Cities and they have a set fee. Am I correct in that interpretation, Ken?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep. The League actually pays their fee.
The League pays the fee to the agency from the.
I don't, does the League pass that cost through the dues? It may be a shell game, I suppose, but.
Well, it wouldn't be through the dues, it would be through the insurance premium.
Through the premium, yeah. I don't know, Ken, I'm looking at you.
I'm looking down, so.
Yeah. It's sort of a convoluted kind of a reach.
No, there's a set fee for providing agent services to the League of Minnesota Cities. I think one of the things that we did discover in the conversation is that it is possible for the entities to negotiate a lower rate, but there is a set maximum fee. And when we sent out our, our request to the two local firms that had provided proposals, we didn't specify or ask for a dollar amount because, I guess from my personal perspective, I would like to hire the firm that can provide the best services for us and has the best degree of experience and, and brings the most to the table. So we didn't ask for.
Price.
Or adjustments in the price that they would pay. I'd say that we couldn't do that, ask for subsequent changes, but I don't know that the, I don't know what the significance of the amounts would be.
I think we determined they would be rather immaterial for consideration here, so we didn't go down that path.
Why are we changing if nothing's different?
Well, there are things different. The website that they offer is, provides excellent information and access and some of our employees have used it. There is a difference in the interest and eagerness as reflected in the presentation. And so, to me, and, you know, it's good to change things up once in a while. 20 years with the same provider, why not?
Could we ask if they could be comparative though? For the similar services website?
They are, well, we asked, they don't have a website, Insurance, Reliable Insurance Agency.
Have we had any issues with Northern Reliable in not servicing the city?
No, I told you that, you know, we have no issues with Reliable Insurance Agency at all.
Mr. Chairman. Counsel Briggs.
In the meeting, if you, if you listen to both presentations, the presentations by Krista was.
President.
Was, her enthusiasm, the way she presented it, she also, it seemed that there was other services that were available that she could provide. But comments from the staff was that she was working with staff already on certain items that was not even part of her duties so far as working with Betty on Blue Cross, Blue Shield. She was helping Kelly in his arena in the safety coordinator position with providing him information, which she did on her own. The, you know, I think that's what gets back to City Administrator is, based on her presentation, it seemed like she was more willing to work with the city to help us. She, in her presentation, had laid out everything so far as how many injuries we've had in our experience rating, so far as the, the number of strains and sprains, cuts, bruises, the things that we're having to pay out money in our workman's comp. She laid that all out. She had all the information of what we as a city have been doing. And I thought that was great that, that somebody is enthusiastic enough, that they've, they've done their homework and said, here is what you're experiencing now, here's maybe how I can help you to lower our workman comp cases and, and those kinds of things.
Hungriness.
I mean, there's a lot of other things that come playing in it too, but.
I think you reward hungerness and effort and, you know, competitiveness. She demonstrated that.
Counsel Drowba.
So, I was gone when this first came up, so I actually caught up some of my information by speaking with Counselor Briggs. And the, the thing that got, got me about this is it was the person that's being awarded it that came to the council and said, hey, we have the service, I'd like to do this for you. And I think that that automatically puts the previous person at a disadvantage because obviously someone's trying to take someone else's position. Mr. Anderson has been doing, doing the city's insurance for 20 years. We haven't had any real issue with that. He has a space on 53, pays taxes inside the city. With all of that being said, I appreciate people that are trying to go forward and, and do more. I, I know both people. You know, I mean, it's a, it comes down to what we're going to get most for no additional money. And I, I think I can support this. It, but it is, this is like one of the tougher ones that I've had on City Council because this is not because someone's doing something wrong. No one's doing anything bad. It's just what can we do better? What can we change that gives us more services, more to offer our employees, our staff, or just, just knowledge? So I think I can support this, but it's literally with a very heavy heart that I would do that.
There's a, there's a win/lose on this and it's not fun, it's not a fun decision to make.
Absolutely not.
But, you gotta make a decision.
I have the highest regard for both Tim Anderson as an insurance agent and Cindy Hybol and it's, I think, it's a very, very difficult decision. My understanding, Cindy, and correct me if I'm wrong, the agency that you work for is out of Duluth?
It's based out of Duluth, yeah.
Based out of Duluth.
They have a home office.
You have your home office here. As you point out, Northern Reliable is a business in the community with employees paying taxes, so it's very, very difficult to change there. Further discussion?
I've looked at both sides and in the comments in the HR Committee was services and things like that, but it was also brought up the fact that Northern Reliable does exist, has three employees and those kinds of things. If I was to vote strictly based on how I feel, I'd go with Cindy because I think it's good to move forward that way. But based on discussions with a number of my constituents, they feel that, well, what did he do wrong? You know, you can't say that the existing agent did anything wrong. You know, I'm sorry, you know, they didn't do anything wrong. Given the opportunity, because he didn't know any better, could he do more? Probably so if we asked. So could we get more, the same services out of him? I would think so. But my constituents think the fact that because you're looking at a business that's already existing and it, and it has three people working there, you know, where is that money going to go? Well, to me, it looks like Northern Reliable, that fee stays in town. The fee that might go to Cindy, how much of that stays in town is going to go to, to the Duluth office. And based on that, you know, I, I think I have to stay with Mr. What my constituents are telling me.
It's a difficult decision. I respect that argument. However, I think that at the day that we heard, we had this, had them come to the Human Resource Committee, both were on equal footing, both had, knew they were in a competitive situation. I think that you have to consider legacy versus, I mean, one is a legacy relationship, the other one is of somebody who's trying to build a business locally is new. By Reliable's own statement that day, they have almost all of the business, if not all of it, for the county, for government. I see that we want to be, open up our doors, be competitive, welcome startups and new business. And I don't feel that awarding this contract to a new agency will undermine, materially undermine the, the very large business that Northern Reliable has with all the other entities in the county. And I do think the competition is good. I do think that people should routinely switch their insurance and internet providers in order to maintain a good price too, although price is not an issue here. It's good business practice to switch things up. A while.
Further discussion? The motion is to approve the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee to appoint Solutions Insurance Agency as the agent of record for the Casualty Workers Compensation Insurance Program for the city. Question?
No.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
A vote no. There'd be two, four, and three against, the motion would fail. Item number 11 then under new business would be to set the Comprehensive Plan Project Steering Team meeting with the Community Design Group on October the 25th and 26th, or 26th, which.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you. I did send out a poll to see when most people could show up and I heard from, I don't know, five people and it sounds like both days are fine for two. Mr. Levine can make it between 11:30 and 2:00 both days or after 4:30. And one person said Thursday was better, but, you know, we could pick a day and they'll do what they can to show up. So, in talking with the consultant, I think they were planning on being here around 11:30 or 12 on the 25th. And at least as far as looking at the ordinance information, they thought it might be appropriate to spend some time and work with Kelly Myers and myself and, and kind of go through some specific questions and draft issues with that and perhaps anybody from the council that wants to sit in and talk about it informally before we had a more formal meeting because if there's any changes that they needed to make, they could do that on the afternoon or evening of the 25th before they met sometime on the morning of the 26th, I guess, which are. But they'll be here, as I said, sometime around 11:30 or noon on the 25th and if they need to be, they can stay through Friday morning. So whatever works for us to get the most people present and what also would, would I would suggest the morning of the 26th.
For the meeting with regard to the Comprehensive Plan?
Working with the Comprehensive Plan and the land use regulation. So having a project steering team, which includes all the council as well as the citizen members and having that meeting with the consultants that would talk about the comp plan and the plan sections related to what their draft looks like for the comp plan as well as the subdivision and the land use regulation. Talk about all three of those at the project steering team meeting. I think with staff, we want to go over some of the details on the ordinance development because we have not seen those yet before it would go forward with the project steering team.
Time would you be looking at, 9:00, 8:30, 9 o'clock?
And for how long?
About 7 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
You signed up for this. You asked people to vote for you for this.
I know, I must have been. Careful of what you ask for, right?
Be busy till the end of the year anyways.
That's true.
Question, I would have City Administrator, given the, where we are in the process, especially with the, the plan, maybe with the ordinance too, but I'm just wondering if we might not open this also to members of the Planning Commission, that we might invite them to be, participate in the meeting. I don't know how many, we have nine members on the Planning Commission. I don't know how many of them can make it. I know, I believe some of them have got full-time jobs so that they may not be able to get away. But I, I think it might be worthwhile because I think we're getting far enough into the process here that maybe have some input on what they see.
I agree. Can do that.
Looking at scheduling then for Thursday at 8:30?
Yes, that works.
7:00 PM.
I got 4:00.
Might be a break for lunch. All right, so council's pleasure then with setting the, the meeting with the Project Steering Team, Planning Commission, and members of the council with the Community Design Group for Thursday, October the 26th at 8:30 AM.
I'll move on that meeting time.
We need a, we need a motion on that?
Yes, for one.
I'll second. Aye.
Second by Counsel Jacksaw. Motion by Counsel Drowba, second by Counsel Jacksaw to set the meeting at 8:30. Would not be a special city council, I mean, this is just a, a meeting of which the council would be present with the steering team and Planning Commission with the consultants. Questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried. Meeting time is approved. Thank you. Any other new business? I will go to reports of the committees and department heads and start with the City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items for your information. The first is the consultants had finished installing the playground equipment at Green Acres Park. I've been informed by the Street and Water Commissioner that our crews will be working this week and should have it done on Friday, installing the timbers that go around the border of the playground equipment and the sand for the digger equipment. And so that should be done by the end of the week as well as finishing up with the drain tile that's going out to 7th Avenue. So, most of our work should be done with that. In talking with the Public Works Director, there's a, a plan to put in a few parking spaces with a gravel lot over there, so the Public Works Director is looking at a design for that. I'm not sure when they'll be ready to install that. I think the hope is to do that before the snow's flying this fall. And I will keep you posted when we need to look at having some kind of a grand opening event for that. So I want to coordinate with the people at BACUS and, and also at the county that applied for the grant funds that we received. We're very fortunate in the grant funding to, to do that work and it was somewhat gratifying to go over there last week and there were seven kids playing over there after 7:30 at night with a car parked over there and a parent over there. And I also received an email from somebody in the public that said kids have been over there fairly steady since it went in. So, it's been well received already.
That's great.
And then secondly, I did put a copy of a report or an article that was in the Building Operator Certification Summer Newsletter and it was dated August of 2017. And, and that article was titled, "BOC Success Story, Ted Brokaw, City of International Falls." So Ted was quoted and talked a little bit about some of the work that we've undertaken here to try and improve our energy efficiency, so I wanted to bring that to the council's attention and thank Ted for his good work and, and a little publicity on the side that we got, so.
Yeah, that's great to read. I have a question though on this because I've read it. I, for the life of me, we, we grew nine buildings in that first decade of this century. I'm trying to think what nine buildings those were. I know three of them would be over at the Park Service building, right? Headquarters, three of them. Headquarters, three of them. I'm at a loss for what the other, others are. The other, the other.
Hi, Serena. It's been upgraded in lighting?
That has been done. But did you?
Three to twelve.
So we've got three buildings at the Park Service. That leaves six. Oh, wow. It's a puzzle.
No, well, the street, I mean, we've done stuff, he's done stuff at a number of facilities. You know, the library, this building, the street garage, got some LED lighting and so.
So I'm misreading this? I thought he said there were.
As a supervisor or as a, he attended the three buildings at the park, but then when he became the street commissioner last year, he picked up all of the additional buildings that the city has and has been converting those, not to lead, but, but certainly improving the, the lighting cost of operation have been reduced because of the, the changes that he has made. So he, he's got twelve, he picked up.
We didn't.
The building grounds manager, the street water commissioner, so he has more.
All right. I get it now. I, I was reading it from the standpoint that the city had nine more buildings. I was at a loss as to what they were. Okay.
Thank you. Further, city administrator?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, council, been working closely with Kelly Myers on these blight issues. In addition to the two that we discussed earlier, there are two other ones that have been discussed previously that we now appear to have resolutions on. One is at 705 Eighth Street. That's the Morph property, and Cory Morph and her mother have signed a consent to have that removed, and I think it's going to be scheduled to be done, to be demolished shortly when the city crews are able to start that. The other process is at 105 12th Street West. That was a property owned by the Metasses, and we were having difficulty moving forward on that, because we couldn't locate them. In the interim, Wells Fargo, who held the mortgage, has foreclosed on it, and the one year redemption period on the foreclosure has expired. So now we only need to deal with Wells Fargo to get that approval, and I'm in the process of doing that and hope to have their consent to have that demolished yet this fall as well. So it looks like there's two more that should be coming down this fall that will make things look better. That's all I have.
Well, congratulations, and especially on 705 Eighth Street. That's been a long time coming. It's going to be a relief to the neighbors to see that one come down. So thank you for that good work. And to Kelly. Further, city attorney, or questions for the city attorney? Thank you for your report. Chief Maston.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I have my August activity report for the police, for the police department in there. ECR numbers, our calls for service of 360, traffic stops 87, 23 medical assists, 16 arrests. We generated 94 ICRs for a total of 580 for total activity for the month of August. A little bit lower than that in 2016. You'll see that we were busy with activities such as our First National Night Out, which was a great success. Also busy with the assistance of the Bass Tournament, which, wherever they went, again. Most notably, I would say that, point out that our drug enforcement team was very busy with seizing more methamphetamine and.
Outstanding work on, on drugs. Certainly appreciate your officers and their good work on that. Community is certainly well aware of drug issues, and I think you're addressing them forthrightly. Questions for Chief Maston? Thank you for your report. Good work. Chief Manasa.
Thank you, Mayor. Summary of the monthly report for August. We did, I'm sorry, we had six fire department call-outs. All six were in the city with a kitchen fire, a commercial fire alarm. We assisted the PD in a search and rescue, which went very well, I believe. They were very fast-acting on that. We had three reports of gas leaks. I have them listed as natural gas, but we did have a propane in there as well. So three, three gas leaks. We did not have any rural fires in the last month here, and then I was, one response for myself, investigation of, somebody thought they had some explosive material, so I went and looked at that and cataloged that for them. In the ambulance for August, we had 71 911s, 40 transfers for a total of 111, which brings our 2017 totals up to 591 911 calls, 351 transfers for a total of 942. Few activities we did in the last month here. Chief Maston mentioned the Bass Tournament and, and National Night Out, which went very well. I would like to commend his department on that. I thought that was a great event. We did our fire and ambulance, did the movie in the park on the 30th, which I'd like to thank Counselor Doba for his help in. We had kind of a fun night showing a Back to the Future movie, and of course, we had a nice full-size prop we were able to use for that. So I'd like to thank Counselor Doba. And then just a notable on the CAT team, again, I believe the council is aware, they were requests for proposals. We submitted our proposal. I have not heard back. I don't know when the end date was off the top of my head. It is coming up here soon, so we will know on that. I am optimistic that we did get that contract. I did bring home here, in August, we had a TAC meeting, which is part of the CAT team. So we discussed some stuff, and we got some new equipment provided by the state outside of the contract, so we came home with about $300,000 worth of equipment. So I'm pretty energetic or enthusiastic that we're receiving that contract. We did get training on that, which we brought back to the people here at home, and we are getting up to speed on that, so. And again, the contract period for this time now closes on September 30th of this year, so that's the end of the fiscal year, and we start the new fiscal year October 1st. So we will be finishing out our funds here in the next month for that fiscal year.
Questions for Chief Manasa? Great, very busy month and very valuable to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Administrator Bergstrom, anything for the city?
I have nothing, Senator.
Finance Director Brad Edistad.
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you both for being here. Reports from mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
I'd like to thank the council for, I wasn't here at the last meeting, I was out of town, for funding our next effort on the citywide cleanup. And I just received notice today that Wade Friend, without Friends, we're not doing this, right? So Wade Friend will step up to the plate again, and I'm wondering about, Wayne Fuller's going to get back to me. Those two players are key. And so, once I hear from that, I'll know tomorrow. I'll start the flyer distribution and moving ahead with publicity end of it, once I know those two key players are in. And Brian, you're a key player, too. You are.
Harley Ball, too.
Okay, thank you. And Harley, I know you would like, you.
I will be in town. I'm more than willing to let you.
Okay, yeah. And anybody, anybody who wants to help out, it's sort of fun, you know?
It is a lot of fun.
Yeah. It's four hours. It's not too big of a commitment, and people really appreciate it. And it's just for our, our wonderful city residents, you know?
Thank you. Further, under council committees, Counselor Doba.
Mr. Mayor, with, with you being absent yesterday and the Mayor Protem being absent yesterday, I gave the speech for the Labor Day Assembly and it was, the Labor Day picnic, and it was a wonderful event put on. I guess it got very busy after I left, but it was, it was steady. They ran out of food, as I understand it, so.
300 to 2,000 people.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I had a lot of hot dogs myself, so that skews the numbers. But, yeah, it was a very good event and wonderfully put on. State Representative Beckland was there and members of the local unions. It was a wonderful event for our community.
Thank you. Anything else?
I stood in for you for the MACV Stand Down, Veterans Stand Down, a couple weeks ago, and it was well-attended, and Representative Beckland was there, representatives for Senator Klobuchar and Congressman Nolan were there. So it was well-represented by a number of vendors from out, throughout the state that provide services to veterans, and it was a well-attended event, and it went up without a hitch.
Thank you for, for standing in and for, for attending that veterans' event. Very well done for the, for the veterans and the community. So thank you to both Counselor Doba and Counselor Briggs for standing in. I've been busy a couple weeks. I was in St. Paul for the, for the days that, for the veterans, and then yesterday was returning from Colorado Springs in a visit with my grandson, who's been appointed to the Air Force Academy, so we had an opportunity to visit with him, so.
Congrats on that.
Great. Thank you. With that, other council committees, you have my written report. Under correspondence, there's a number of items there. Any questions with regard to those? I do have one on the last item, number four, under correspondence with the MPCA on the proposed amendment to the sulfate water quality. I don't know what that could mean to mining in the area, and so I would reserve a right to bring that back to the council for a possible resolution, because I'm concerned that it could have an effect on mining for our area. If that, is there anything further to come before the council? Audience, anyone in the audience that wishes to, to address the council at this time? If not, thank you again for your attendance. The next regular city council meeting will be at 4:30 on Monday, September the 18th. Meeting is adjourned.